I just don't have them on my screen. Wait a minute, I mean, uh.
So do we have a quorum, one, two?
That's what I gotta count. Yeah, we do.
Okay.
Yeah, we have four of us.
Okay.
All right. So it's a little after seven, not too bad. Um, first, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals. I do have a public notice that I have to read before the hearing. And it is, "The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread, and all town facilities are currently closed to the public. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law 30A20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. This meeting will be broadcast live through local access cable on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, And will be able to be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. The following information is also provided for members of the public that would like to participate in the meeting remotely. Uh, to participate remotely from a computer, please use the link, or from a telephone, dial the toll-free number 888-475-4499, and enter webinar ID, meeting ID 876-8659-5130. If you are not registered with Zoom, you'll be asked for your name and an email address. No, no participant ID is needed, just press the pound when asked. Telephone users may dial *9 to request to speak after joining the meeting. Computer and app users may use the raise hand feature to request to speak. We are gonna have the first meeting is Paul Luria, 63 Pratt Street, Lunenburg, Mass. 01462, requesting an amendment to a special permit for dimensional variation for a ground-mounted small-scale solar array. At 7:30, we'll be having another hearing that will be Anavasi LLC, Vasilios and Anastasia Halkeadakis, 88 Massachusetts Ave, Lunenburg, Mass., requesting a special permit to modify and divide the existing commercial space from three tenant spaces to five. We will then go into executive session. We will have a motion to enter into executive session into adjourn after exiting executive session. Present to ask General Law 30, Section 21, Paragraph 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the government's litigating position in the CHISO declares, namely, Massey versus Town of Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals, Wester Superior Court, Civil Action Number 1985CB01033. And with that, uh, I'd like to take a roll call and actually introduce the board. Um, first, uh, the board secretary is Lisa Normandin. And could just respond?
Here.
And James Bezakowski. James, if you could respond. Okay, he waved. Uh, James, just so you know, you are muted. Hans Winthrop?
Here.
And David Platt is gonna join, David Black is gonna join later, Patrick Callahan?
Oh, here.
Uh, and we also have a new alternate, I'm not sure if he's on or not, Anthony De Castro. Um, he is a new alternate member. Uh, the way the, the hearing will proceed is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. If you'd like to speak, please give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions that they might have on the application. There will be a public comment period. If anyone from the public would like to speak, you will raise your hand, give your name and address, and address all comments and questions to the board. This is, these are special permits, so there are required findings, which are, one, that it will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic flow, congestion, danger of fire, or explosion, or other reasons. Two, that it will not have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood. Three, that it will be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use. And four, that it will not produce noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines amongst clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. And with that, Lisa, I would ask you to please read the first, uh, application.
Okay, this is an application for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicants are Trinity Solar, on behalf of Paul Luria, 63 Pratt Street, Lunenburg. The undersigned hereby makes application as follows, "A special permit for dimensional variation for placement of a ground-mounted solar." The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section 254.13. The street address of the property is 63 Pratt Street, Lunenburg, Assessors Map 97, Parcel 18. The name and address of, of holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is Paul Luria and Paula Cookson Luria of 63 Pratt Street, Lunenburg. And the deed was recorded in Western Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book 5709, Page 244, and recorded May 26, 2005. The, if the undersigned has any knowledge of a prior appeal, application, or petition concerning the land or building involved in this case, describe the case and the dates involved. The special permit was previously granted in November 2019 for construction of an 8.19 AWDC solar system. Construction did not occur. This new application seeks approval of a 7.9.765 KWDC solar system instead. We have answered the special permit questions as follows. The question is, A, will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire, or explosion, or other reasons? The reply, "Proposed action of the installation of ground-mounted solar will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire, or explosion, or for any other reason." B, will the action have material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The reply, "This action will not have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood. Having the solar panels installed would potentially increase the property value for the homeowner." C, will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use? The reply, "Because this is an open use, the proposed action will be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness. Our crews are very clean and will not disrupt any neighbors during the installation process." And D, will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? And the reply, "The proposed action of the installation of ground-mounted solar will not produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. The solar array is arranged in such a manner that should be absorbing most of the light that hits it, causing little to no glare. If there is any glare, it would be directed up and away from any adjacent properties." The following information, additional information is provided, provided because it is considered important to the case. Mr. Luria has chosen this location for his ground-mounted solar installation due to a leach fielding garden located on his property. He has already received approval from his neighbors, and that's signed September 3, 2020, by Paul Luria of 63 Pratt and Keith Leslie of Trinity Solar, 4 Open Square Way of Holyoke, Massachusetts. In addition, there is a, a plan of the ground-mounted solar system. There is a septic plan attached, and there is a letter from the Duncan Commissioner. I have reviewed the application and have the following comments. The property in question is Parcel ID 9718 and is located at 63 Pratt Street. It is currently being used as a single-family home in the residence A history. Proposed work is a small-scale, ground-mounted photovoltaic installation. 4.13C. Due to not being able to meet dimensional setbacks, this project was previously required to go before the Zoning Board of Appeals and was granted a special permit for 8.19 KW solar system on November 13, 2019. The building permit applied for on July 31, listed a 10.08 KW system. Small-scale ground-mounted systems must be under 10 KW. The application before the board listed 9.765 KW system in place of the previously approved 8.19 KW system. There is also a site plan attached, and there are, there is a letter of support. And it says, "To whom it may concern, Paul and Paula Luria, located at 63 Pratt Street, Lunenburg, are pursuing the installation of ground-mounted photovoltaics in order to offset their energy consumption. As their next-door neighbor, Mr. and Mrs. Luria have sought my opinion as it pertains to this matter. As an abutting landowner to the property owned by Mr. and Mrs. Luria, I, Joseph Alvarez, have no opposition to the completion of the installation of the ground-mounted solar array. It is my hope that this signed letter will help ensure the approval to proceed with the aforementioned installation." And that's signed Joseph Alvarez of 57 Pratt Street. The same exact letter was also signed by, it looks like Rajad Mora of 63 Pratt Street, Lunenburg. The, a similar letter, exactly the same letter, signed by Thomas Lowe of 71 Pratt Street. And Linda T. Rivard signed the same letter, and her address is 67 Pratt Street. And attached to that is also a list of, of letters from the Assessors Office with their site plan. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Okay, and with that, um, I would invite the applicant. I believe he is Willis.
Hi, I'm Keith Leslie, 207 West Main Street, Westboro, Massachusetts. I'm an application specialist with Trinity Solar, which filed this application on behalf of the Rias. So just one small correction to that is the 65 Pratt Street that was signed by Raymond Moran. So this application is for a ground-mounted solar system. The, the Rias previously sought to have a system built and received a special permit in November of last year. Uh, that project was delayed as they decided to make additional considerations regarding potential locations and other considerations regarding the project. Um, but they have decided to continue and move forward with, um, installing a ground-mounted solar system. And upon further review of their electrical usage, it was determined that a larger system would be more suitable to their, uh, needs in covering a larger percentage of their electrical usage. And that's why the proposal, uh, is, we're seeking is to modify for the addition of, um, five panels to bring the solar system up to 31 panels, um, which is the 9.765 kilowatts total described in the application. These additional panels are added, um, toward the house um, from, on that end of the previous array, so that they are not extending further into, um, the area that is adjacent to the property line. And it does not have any substantial change in terms of any of the other factors, such as square, noise, heat, um, and so on, that were previously considered. I would note as well that, uh, we did receive, I believe, on Monday evening, a request from the Board of Health to, uh, superimpose the, uh, array on top of a as-built of the existing septic system. And soon as we had that completed this afternoon, we uploaded a copy of that document, which shows that the solar system will not impede upon the existing, uh, septic system or leach field. Uh, and we are cognizant of the Board of Health's concern, expressed via comment, that the existing grading, uh, not be disrupted and that any equipment not interfere with the existing septic system. We're happy to answer any additional questions. Um, but this is essentially just to add an additional, um, five panels to the previously sought, uh, special permit.
Okay, thank you. Um, a, a couple of quick questions. As I recall, um, in the original petition, the original, what was asked for was very close to the, uh, the rear and the side lot lines. Uh, they, you did go away, you came back with, uh, some revisions to that. And I believe the approved setbacks was 17 feet, 3 inches on the side. Yard, 5 feet, 9 inches to the rear. Um, is this still in that same exact location? Any of those, those setbacks?
Uh, yes, it is in the same location with the exception of the additional panels.
So the additional panels and the footprint doesn't, doesn't encroach anymore into the side yard or rear?
That's correct.
Okay, and I, I did check it out again. I did see that you, you have the, uh, framework up, is that correct? Is that the location?
Uh, yes, there is some, uh, framework in the, uh, what's planned to be the location.
Okay, and just, just a couple more things, just, um, just, uh, refreshing my memory here. Um, the reason that, uh, we, we did the dimensional variation, I already recall, was the septic system. I believe there was some garden areas, large trees, and different, uh, um, things that made that location, um, the better location for the layout of the, the land and the yard, correct?
Uh, yes, that's correct. The, uh, septic system and then the leach field take up a substantial portion of, uh, the Rias backyard. And in the space between the septic system and their house, um, there's an existing garden. There's also an existing garden behind the septic system. Um, so the current proposed location is, with consideration of those obstacles which prevent the placement of the system, the best location.
Okay, thank you. Um, with that, I'd like to open up to the, uh, rest of the board members with any questions or concerns or anything that you gentlemen need.
I don't have any further questions.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Patrick?
Um, I, I think you've basically covered everything. I was gonna ask myself, um, I mean, height is, I'm assuming staying the same and just, the frame is coming further towards the house, if I understand it correctly.
Uh, yes, that is correct.
Okay, so the height does stay exactly the same?
That's correct. It's still four racks of panels. It's just extending further toward the house.
Okay, so everything extends into the property and not with the side or rear?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Hans?
Uh, I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman. I think you answered or asked the question that I wanted to ask is I just wanna make sure that the, uh, side and rear setbacks that we agreed to, uh, back in October adhere to, and it sounds like they are.
Okay, all right. And Lisa, do you, uh, I should say, Patrick, is there anybody, uh, from the public that you sent?
See, I do not see any hands raised. So, and get some additions for, it looks like the next, uh, meeting. So no, I think we're all set with questions.
Okay, if there's no, uh, public comments, uh, then I would actually ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the approval of the, um,
we can't hear anything.
Increase in, um, the size of the, or the number of panels by five, provided it remains in the exact location and additionally closer to the house as previously, um, awarded.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Aye.
Hans?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
And I say aye, so, uh, yeah, the change to the system, the size increase from 8.19 to 9.765, uh, is approved. That, I do have to read, um, the post-decision instruction. Uh, the special permit is granted with the contingency that a petition will comply with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances of any and all applicable local, state, and federal boards or agencies with jurisdictional purposes. The special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permit-granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. Noncompliance to such conditions may result in or revocation of this permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days, and any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court within 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk, that 20 days have elapsed. Since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded in the Registry of Deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded. This special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use or construction has commenced. With that, good luck with your new solar system.
Good luck.
Thank you. Okay, 7:26, we have four more minutes before the next hearing, which is at 7:30. Which is going to be the, uh, Anavasi LLC and Vasilios and Anastasia Halkeadakis, I hope I said that correctly, 88 Mass Ave, Lunenburg, Mass. And they are requesting a special permit to modify and divide the existing commercial space with three tenant, uh, spaces to five.
Are you comfortable continuing as the host? Cause I see Dave's here.
Oh, yeah. Either way, whatever you want, you wanna stay?
I don't care. How did I do? Am I fired?
Well, comfortable, aren't you? Welcome, David. I also, did I see, um, uh, Anthony, the new associate? Did I see him? Come on.
Yes, he did join.
Uh, we have about three minutes if he'd like to, uh, introduce himself to the board. No, I don't see him.
Um, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Uh, so, yeah, I'm just happy to be part of this, part of, part of the zoning board and just wanna learn and listen and learn stuff from you guys. I know you got, all of you people have been on the board for a longest time, so I'm hoping you guys can mentor me and show me the ways, as I say.
Okay. Again, welcome, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Um, hopefully at some point, we're gonna get back to meeting in person.
Does he have on his video camera? And does David have on his?
Yes, I do.
Uh, it doesn't come up on my screen.
I can add some video.
Oh, there you are. Okay.
Oh, come on, camera.
No, I didn't see you.
There you go, let's try that.
Okay. Uh. Can you, can you guys hear me right now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I was, I got myself. Yeah, you won't see me, but, uh, you'll hear me.
Okay.
I was gonna say, Mr. Chair, did you tell the new member that, uh, he only gets a little while before he gets thrown into the fire like the rest of us?
Thanks.
No problem. We have, we have confidence in you.
Thank you very much. Let me see if I can figure this out.
Okay, in just another minute, we'll, uh, we'll go into our second, uh, application. I'm not gonna read the, uh, the notice again as, uh, we're just going right into each other. But I will reintroduce the board. In case anybody who is on. And it is now 7:30, um, it is time for the, uh, next case. So I would like to, again, welcome everybody to the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals. Um, I will do a roll call for this meeting as well since we have some new members. So first, uh, Lisa Normandin is our board secretary.
Here.
And, uh, James Bezakowski.
Here.
Hans Winthrop.
Here.
David Black.
Here.
And Patrick Callahan.
Here.
Okay, and I'm Alfred Gravel, and I'm here. And again, we have an alternate, Anthony De Castro.
Here.
Okay, and the way the hearing will proceed is, uh, again, Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. If you would like to speak, please give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions they might have on the application. There will be a public comment period. If anyone from the public would like to speak, raise your hand and give your name and address, and please address all comments and questions to the board. The board will go into deliberations. This is also a special permit, so there's certain required findings, and they are, that it will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic flow, congestion, danger of fire, explosion, or other reasons. That it will not have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood. That it will be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use. And that it will not produce, uh, noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the petition.
This is an application for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicants are Anavasi LLC, Anastasia and Vasilios Halkeadakis of 28 Clement Road, West Townsend, Mass. 01474. The undersigned makes application as follows. To modify the building at 88 Massachusetts Avenue from an existing floor plan to proposed floor plan. Both plans are included. It's currently a three-unit building and would like to convert to a five-unit building. An application for the same dated nine, uh, November, I'm sorry, September of 2020 was submitted to the building inspector and was denied by the same for the reasons stated in the letter attached here, too. Proposed action has not begun. The basis for the application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals. The basis for that application is found on the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section two fifty dash four point one K and nineteen. The basis, I'm sorry, the street address of the app, of the um, of the property is eighty-eight Massachusetts Avenue in Lunenburg, Assessors Map seventy-six, parcel two. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land, which is the subject of this case, is Anavasi LLC, twenty-eight Clement Road, Townsend, Mass. Zero one four seven four, and the deed is recorded in Western Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book nine six five four, page three one six, and recorded July twenty-first, two thousand twenty. The special permit questions and answers are as follows. Will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion or other reasons? The reply is no. Will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The reply was no. C, will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use? That was not applicable. D, will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat or glare observable at the lot lines in amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? And the reply was no. And it was signed September tenth of two thousand twenty by Vasilios Hakidakis and Anastasia Hakidakis of Anavasi LLC, twenty-eight Clement Road, West Townsend, Mass. zero one four seven four. The zoning board received a, a letter from the Building Commissioner, Casey Burlingame, and I will read that letter. I reviewed the application, have the following comments. The property in question is parcel ID seventy-six dash twenty, listed as eighty-eight Massachusetts Avenue. It is in the commercial district. Building is currently being used as a commercial structure with three tenant spaces. Propose uses to divide the space further, creating two additional tenant spaces with the same footprint of the existing building. Proposed total of five tenant spaces. A single piece of real estate containing more than three commercial establishments and a total business space of more than five thousand square feet planned, constructed and managed at the total entity with a customer and employee parking provided for onsite units would classify this commercial building as a shopping center. Per Section two fifty, four point one K nineteen, under Table four point one, a shopping center in the commercial district requires a special permit through the Zoning Board of Appeals. In addition, the application must apply to the Planning Board for site plan approval as per Section two fifty, eight point four B, five and six. The granting of a special permit would not exclude specific uses in the tenant spaces from requiring possible future town approvals. Some commercial uses would not be allowed or would require further approvals. And there is a copy of the existing floor plan. A copy of the proposed floor plan. A list of abutters provided from the assessors office. And a site plan showing where the, where it is in relationship. And I also received late in the day, an email from Jim Griffey from the Lunenburg Board of Health. The Board of Health doesn't have an issue with the proposal. Property is served by water and sewer, but will need to review individual uses of the proposed space, i.e. food service, to ensure compliance with state and federal regulations. And that's signed by James Gariffy from the Nishoba Associated Boards of Health. I also um, received a memo from Barbara, the uh, business manager for the Lunenburg Sewer Commission. And she asked that the same be reviewed if any food service establishments um, take place in the, in the future business. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
And with that, I would invite the applicants uh, to add anything they would like to say or be available for questions and comments.
Yeah, just have to unmute.
Hello?
Hello.
Yeah. I'm sorry, we're all new to this. I apologize for all technical difficulties.
It's quite all right. We, we have our own difficulties at times.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to introduce us. Uh, my name is Anastasia Halkadakis. I'm gonna have you address me as Stacy, just for easy purposes. And this is my husband, Bill. Um, we currently already own a property in Lunenburg. We own the um, four twenty-nine, four thirty-three Electric Avenue, uh, where Presto Pizza and Lunenburg Liquor is housed. So we've been in Lunenburg for a while. We don't live there, but we've, we call it our home because our businesses were uh, located there and a lot of our customers, a lot of our customer base is from Lunenburg. So um, back in July, we saw this building and spoke to the Mackies and um, decided to purchase it with the intent of possibly doing our own restaurant. That's what we've been in, is in the restaurant business. Whether it be pizza or breakfast or whatever. Um, and because of COVID, when we purchased it, we just put up signs um, to see what, you know, to, to feel out what everybody was thinking of. So we have a few different options, uh, one of which was a nail salon and one was a pizza place. And again, we went forward to the building department and this is how we ended up with you guys. So this is what we were told we needed to do in order to get the building subdivided and that's what we're doing. So any questions that you may have of us, um, we're willing to answer. But I think Lisa basically stated everything that we're looking for from you guys.
Okay, thank you. Um, one question, uh, you just bought the property uh, in July.
We, I think we closed August first, to be exact, or July first, one of the two. I really don't remember. July first.
Okay, so when you, when you say you kind of felt out for what the market wanted out there, um, was there no use for the larger space for just the third?
Honestly, there have been a few inquiries to use it as a um, doggy daycare. But because the space is so large, it's about almost four, close to five thousand square feet as it stands now, the, the empty space. Um, it's too big for any, but any one particular person. Uh, we had a few um, questions in regards to using it as, as an automobile, like a, like a dealership. But people, they didn't understand that the, and I don't know if you know the lot that we're referring to. The empty lot next to it is not part of our lot. So when they found out that that wasn't available, that space in front of the lake, then they didn't want it either. So it's been very hard to lease the whole space as a whole.
Okay, are you talking about if I was looking at the building from the street, the lot to the left, kinda?
Correct. The one that connects the building to the Mackie Center, it does not belong to us.
Does not belong, okay.
Not the whole lot, yeah, no. So a lot of the dealerships that were coming in with the intent that they would put all the cars there or some construction companies were interested, it wasn't feasible for them.
Okay, so do you, you, you say you have a couple of possible tenants? Do you have any others or is that?
We have two possible tenants and then the rear, which is the garage right now. Uh, i- if we get the two tenants in, then we've got more time to think about the rest of it. Cause we uh, you know, we do have a mortgage on it, so we just wanna be able to, you know, pay off the mortgage, basically minimize that. So we have no use for the third space yet, no.
Okay.
And we don't even know if the two space, the two people that were interested are still interested, in all honesty. But we wanna separate it um, and then go from there. To make it easier to rent as smaller spaces, like two thousand square foot spaces versus a, you know, fifty-eight, fifty-nine square foot space.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have some other questions, but I'd rather open it up to the board right now, so they get whatever questions they would have in. So with that, I will open it up to the board. Uh, any other board members have any questions they'd like to ask?
I think Stacy um, answered all the questions that I had in her explanation of everything, so thank you. I think you've done a good job of um, revitalizing the signage and everything else. It looks a lot better.
Thank you. We look forward to making it look a lot better. I appreciate it.
Okay, any other board members?
I just have one quick question. Um, I never really, even living here for so long, I never kind of realized that it goes down the side there. Um, I've always just kind of gone by from the front. Um, so as far as parking, i- is the parking just gonna kind of continue around the whole building, pulling directly at the building? Or do you own any?
We do, so we own, um, if you look at the land, it kind of goes in, in like a diagonal, so we have a lot of frontage. And then it's, it kind of like stops right at the back end of the building. Um, once everything is all said and done, we've spoken to um, Mr. Mackie, I believe it's Glenn, I, I'm gonna, I hope I'm not wrong in the name. The gentleman that owns the rest of the land, and we were talking about actually um, kind of straightening it out, like squaring it off, so that he gives us some land, we give, give him some land. So if you, if you look at the fence in the front, part of that fence belongs to us.
Okay, you, yeah, okay.
Uh, it, it probably was, if you're looking directly in front of the building, to the left, it's probably three or four posts of the fence. Um, or, or one of the light poles. We, because we didn't know what was going on yet, we had, we were in the process of getting it paved. So you would have been able to see better, but we stopped that just so that we can get this meeting underway and make sure that everything is copacetic before we, you know, go spending thirty thousand dollars to pave it.
Right, right, okay, yeah.
So it is, it's a substantial parking, substantial parking, not enough for a dealership, but substantial for what we're looking to do.
Goes down basically the entire length of the building.
Correct.
All that.
And then some.
Yeah, okay, perfect, thank you.
Oh, clarification, did you say includes the land in the back, the parking area in the back of the building?
Is there parking areas in the back of the building? Yes. We were hoping to just make that the tenant parking.
Okay.
Because you can go around the building right now, but obviously to the left of the building is that eyesore, and we don't wanna get involved in customers going around. We would rather have the tenants be back there.
I was actually gonna ask about if that was part of the property, that's why.
It was not, no. I've heard a lot of stories about it, but I, you guys probably know better what it is.
Okay, okay. Uh, any other questions from the board? David or Hans?
Mr. Chairman, this is David. Um, my question is, is uh, the number of, I, I, I unfortunately don't have it, but uh, the number of total parking spots that you will have um, for customers would be?
That has not been determined yet. We could probably come up with a plan.
They can give you an amount, like about.
Uh, but we, like I said, we were waiting for the actual paving to go in. Currently, uh, the front of the building, I believe, has ten?
Twenty, you can do twenty, like you can.
No, but right in front of the building.
Right in the front, you can put ten.
So right in the front is ten, and we're hoping to go along, so if you're looking at the building along the left side, you could probably do another twenty down all the way to the back of the property. So probably thirty parking spots easily.
Okay, alright, because.
And then the rear for the, for the customer, I mean, for the employee parking.
Understand, but you're, you're proposing uh, five businesses that you're looking at. Uh, you would look at it as a minimum of uh, well, about six spaces per, per tenant?
Uh, yeah, if you look at it that way, yes.
Yeah, that will be about then.
Alright, I, I just look at it as some of the business you're proposing, you know, a nail slot, if, have, you know, how many people could be in there at one time and making sure there's enough parking in there.
Right, absolutely.
Oh.
Absolutely agreed, yeah.
We would definitely have that for sure.
Alright, and you're, and um, the idea is the garage that used, that used to be there for the rental place? You're looking at that, right now, that's not part of what you're looking to split up?
That is actually, that's one of the three splits. So the front, that, that was the actual um, uh.
Rental.
The rental, yeah, the rental.
Yeah, the front part, so the window space would be split into two units. I believe one is seventeen hundred square feet, the other one about eighteen, nineteen square, hundred square feet. And then the garage right now would be a third potential unit. That's not even one that we're, you know, it, it's obviously in there. Uh, we don't have anything uh, to go in there right now, so it's just dead space. But um, yeah, that would, we are actually splitting the garage. So if, once the three units are split, the garage will be its own entity.
Okay, excellent, alright. Mr. Chairman, that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Uh, Hans, do you have any questions? Hans still with us?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, um, I was saying that I think they, most of the folks have answered the questions I was going to ask. Um, and I, and regarding to some of the other spaces about parking spots and so forth, that'll be uh, addressed through the Planning Board when they go to site plan approval, if this is approved.
Right, okay. Um, okay, um, actually, I mean, I said I had some other questions. The other questions I, I was going to ask about work, all concerning the parking and uh, the types of businesses to determine. Of course, right now, you don't know the types of businesses, they're making smaller units. So I'm gonna assume that that's gonna require maybe less parking, because if you had something in that big space, like a a gym or something like that, or a dollar store, you'd probably have much more parking. So uh, I did have a little concerns about um, the parking, but I originally was thinking that whole area to the left of your building, that triangular area uh, was part of your land, and so it didn't seem to be an issue. Um, I guess at this point, thirty spaces, about five or six per um, in the types of businesses you're talking would probably be appropriate. I don't know if you'd have any businesses that would need to have trucks coming in to load or unload any product, but you'd also have to have a, a certain area for that. Where they could do it off, off the main road.
Yes, it is, it is on the side. If it's gonna be a pizza on the, on the left side, there is a side door, the truck will back up there and unload the food and then leave.
Okay, so it would be down in the back where the uh, renting.
Where the garage entrance is.
It would be to the left of the building, not all the way around, but to the left of the building.
Almost halfway down, the, the exit door will be there.
Okay, okay, alright, very good. Um, and again, as they mentioned, just to mention on again, uh, you would have to go to the Planning Board and there are.
Yes, we have planning and sewer and all of those are in, on the list after tonight's meeting.
Okay, and again, uh, this, if, if this is granted, just a reminder that there are certain um, businesses that you may have to get a special permit for. I don't hear anything that you're talking about right now, but uh, just to let you know that. Okay, um, if there's no other questions, then I um, would ask the board if someone would like to make a motion?
Uh, public uh, comments?
Yes, oh yes, I'm sorry. Is there any uh, public comment? Do we uh, see anybody?
Nope, uh, no one in the waiting room, no one with a hand raised, um, so.
Thank you for reminding me, Jim.
You're welcome.
Okay, and with that, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we uh, grant the special permit at eighty-eight Mass Ave. Changing the building from three um, three tenanted to a five building.
Subject to um, Planning Board Review?
Yeah, subject to Planning Board Review.
Okay, yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, and yes, it, it actually changes it from a commercial to shopping center by adding that. Um, we have a motion and a second. I'll ask for a roll call vote. I mean.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Patrick?
Aye.
Hans?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Say aye. So with that, um, special permit is granted. I do have post decision instructions I have to read. The special permit is granted with the contingency that the petitioner comply with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances and of any and all applicable local, state and federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. Noncompliance to such conditions may result in revocation of this permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within fourteen days. Any party agreed by this board's decision may appeal to Superior Court within twenty days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk, that twenty days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded at the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded. And this special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use or construction has commenced. And with that, we wish you luck with your new uh, building and your.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, and with that, um, hearings are over. I'm actually going to ask someone to make a motion that we go into executive session.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for discussion of, as read in the opening minutes.
Okay, uh, we have a motion. Uh, all those in favor? Roll call.
Uh. Did we have a second?
I, I, I second David, I second.
Okay.
Okay.
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Uh, Hans?
Aye.
Uh, Dave already. Uh, Dave already made the.
Aye, yeah.
Okay, and I say aye. So we, at this point, we will cut off all the public and we will cut off the recording. The over the air recording, and we are going to go into an executive session. And again, at the end of that, we will be adjourned.